I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. We actually have some councilors that are on their way, but I know people have a busy schedule. This is an unanticipated meeting, so we've gotta get the rest of the councilors out of here to their other business, community business. So today's September 18th, 2019. The forty-third meeting of the twenty-third council will come to order. This is a special city council meeting. Councilor Harris is excused this evening, but all other councilors are present or will be shortly. We are now on a moment of silence led by the, followed by the pledge allegiance led by Councilor Sanchez. Thank you, Councilor Sanchez. Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from council staff at the signup table. The council will take a break, well, actually, the council hopefully will be adjourned by 7:00 PM, and we will not be taking a break. So we want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks, and please no applause or other outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go a lot smoother if we're respectful of one another. We are now on proclamations and presentations, and I know we have one proclamation, and I don't see the people that were going to receive it, well, that's the other one. So this one is the National Recovery? Correct?
I'm Erica Silver.
Okay. So we'll get started with the National Recovery Month. All those here that are going to be receiving that, if you would please come up to the And can you state your names before I proceed with reading the proclamation?
Yes, my name is Patrick Kokersberger.
I'm Holly Smith.
I'm Raina Martinez.
Welcome, welcome. So I'll go ahead and get started. Whereas the United States Department of Health and Human Services Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration, SAMSHA, SAMSHA strives to reduce the impact of substance abuse and mental illness in America's communities. And whereas the National Recovery Month is a national observance held every September to educate Americans that substance abuse treatment and mental health services can enable those with mental health or substance abuse used disorder to live a healthy and rewarding life. And whereas the nationally recognized Recovery Month began in 1989 as Treatment Works Month, which honored the work of substance abuse treatment professionals in the field. In 1998, the observance was modified as a National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recovery Month, expanding to include celebrating accomplishments of individuals in recovery from substance abuse, substance use disorders. The observance evolved once again in 2011 to National Recovery Month to include all aspects of behavioral health. And whereas the City of Albuquerque, in collaboration with the recovery community, community-based organizations, managed care organizations, State of New Mexico Behavioral Health Services Division, Department of Family and Community Behavioral Health Division, Burnaleo County's Department of Behavioral Health, and peers thriving in recovery have initiated a National Recovery Month entitled Albuquerque Celebrates Recovery. And whereas Albuquerque celebrates recovery advocates for and supports individuals with substance abuse and mental health disorders by providing an avenue to achieve and sustain long-term recovery and to reinforce the positive message that behavioral health is essential to the over health of our community. Prevention works, treatment is effective, and people can recover. And whereas the Fourth Annual Albuquerque Celebrates Recovery Event will be celebrated on Civic Plaza on Wednesday, September 25th, 2019, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, to increase awareness and understanding of substance abuse and mental health disorders and to celebrate the gains of those in recovery. Be it proclaimed that the city, that the council, the governing body of the City of Albuquerque hereby proclaims the month of September as National Recovery Month and calls upon citizens to support 2019 Recovery Month theme, "Join the Voices for Recovery. Together, we are stronger." So thank you, guys. Did you wanna say anything?
Yes, I have just something to say real quick. I've prepared a presentation here. So Madam Chair and councilmembers, thank you for having us here for the proclamation of Albuquerque Celebrates Recovery. The diligent members of the Plank Committee for Albuquerque Celebrates Recovery advocate for community by helping raise awareness about substance abuse and mental health and link those in need with resources. The community of Albuquerque Celebrates Recovery is made of people from community-based organizations like a Center for Hope and Recovery, Serenity Mesa, and Duke City Recovery Toolbox. It's also made up of managed care organizations like Presbyterian and Blue Cross Blue Shield, and also with local government support like Raina Martinez, Bobby Cisneros, and Adon Carriaga, who make this all possible. So some of the people involved are peer support workers like myself that have actually overcome some of these serious challenges and wish to help the disconnected to learn that recovery is possible. A number of recovery events take place throughout New Mexico, reaching different parts of impacted populations that struggle with substance use disorders, which also promotes more positive activities. Locally, Albuquerque Celebrates Recovery hosts the annual art show at Casa Cultural, exhibiting art throughout the month of September for and by local recovering artists, and also our powwow, which is a traditionally significant event which actually reaches to an underserved population. And of course, our main event, which is actually on September 25th, Albuquerque Celebrates Recovery, and that would be on the Civic Plaza. So through the community effort of many agencies supporting the effort of Albuquerque Celebrates Recovery, the actual synergy that brings more community awareness and resources to the community heroes that help deliver services to heal our suffering in the community. We are all well aware of the ever-increasing illicit substance crises, and I could speak on how bad it's become, though I think we're all fairly familiar enough with that. Instead, I just wanna talk about the good things that Albuquerque Celebrates Recovery brings. And so we're part of a culture of change to help reduce the stigma of the individual and help fulfill by educating the community so we can get those suffering help that they need instead of being too ashamed to seek it. With so many people and agencies involved and working together, we can help our community and, of course, to all the different people of many different colors and creeds to help unify or disenfranchise, reconnect to the greater community. So by helping an impacted community that we can be responsible for and also responsible for many of the crimes and paid crimes, we begin to help the greater community be safer and reduce crime as a result. The broken families that have become torn by the anguish of watching their spouse, children, or friends succumb to an unfamiliar person because of their substance use disorder will be helped made a right. With different activities for those affected, we change part of the problem, and to have agencies represented at all of these events, we can also help our needing impacted with a suitable agency to get the help that they need and let them know that recovery is actually possible. And with that, I thank you for your support and the opportunity to present before you. So Madam Chair and councilmembers, I'd like to thank you again. We also welcome you to come to our event, September 25th, on the Civic Plaza floor. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Why don't you come up and receive the proclamation? Thank you. [applause] So we have one more proclamation. I know some people were headed this, oh, he just arrived. So Mr. Luis Hernandez, you wanna come up to the podium? Just wanted to read it. Welcome. I apologize. This was a special meeting, and I know you guys were probably thinking the meeting started at 5:00 o'clock, so.
Yes.
Well, thanks for being here, and I will get started by reading the resolution. Whereas the West Central Community Development Group, the WCCDG, is an all-volunteer group comprised of community leaders, residents, and business owners who have come together to achieve their goal of making West Central a vibrant, thriving entertainment and business area. And whereas the purpose of the West Central Community Development Group is to actively promote and affect the redevelopment and revitalization of West Central Metropolitan Area, redevelopment area. And whereas the West Central Community Development Group has partnered with the Southwest Alliance of Neighbors, the Water Authority, Chavis Promotions, various car clubs, the City of Albuquerque, and Burnaleo County to host the thirteenth annual Route 66 West Fest powered by Think Big on Saturday, September 21st, at the Ted M. Gallego Center. And whereas the Route 66 West Fest is an admission-free, family-friendly event best described as a community meeting disguised as a fiesta, and will include a day of live music, a show and shine, a car show, a boxing exhibition, a community survey, and children's activities. And whereas...
Thank you. Whereas the entertainment lineup includes Al Hurricane Jr. and the Hurricane Band, Gonzalo Marisol Flores, Area Hernandez, Attrisco Heritage Academy Mariaches, Manuel Gonzalez, and Sarita Soul Gonzalez, Dancing Stars Dance Studio, Berkey Soul, and Mirage and Santana Experience. And whereas the community survey serves as a tool to help guide the work of the community groups, and whereas in addition to the day's festivities, event goers will also have an opportunity to recognize and celebrate this year's named community champions. Be it proclaimed that the council, the governing body of the City of Albuquerque, encourages residents to participate and attend this year's Route 66 West Fest.
So welcome, Mr. Hernandez. You wanna talk about your event on Saturday?
Absolutely. Thank you, Council President Benya, council members. You know, this event, just as it says, is a community event, or a community engagement event disguised as one big fiesta, provides us the opportunity as an organization to really engage with the community members to identify what the needs are or what their wants are within the West Central community. And we're able to do so in grand fashion by bringing the community together for one big celebration where we get to showcase a rich culture and history that is, you know, I might wanna say a little specific to the southwest mesa of Albuquerque. So again, thank you for your support. Thank you for your continued support. We look forward to your involvement, not only this year, but for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. You wanna come up and receive the proclamation? Councilor Sanchez.
Thank you. This event started years ago, and it was called Think Big. And a lot of the ideas that we have implemented on Albuquerque's west side came from many of the residents in the event, in this event. And Think Big, just thinking outside the box, you know, we've done a lot of great things on Albuquerque's west side. Now it's called West Fest, and we encourage each and every one of you to attend that event. It's a great celebration, celebrating a lot of the great things that have occurred on Albuquerque's west side.
Councilor Borrego.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to say that I completely support this event. I've participated in the past, and I would encourage people to come out. Unfortunately, I won't be able to be there because I have a family funeral, but I definitely am there in spirit.
Thank you, Councilor Borrego. Yes, and I just wanna say too, I just really wanna congratulate the people that organized this. They've been doing this for 13 years. It's a nonprofit organization, but it's all volunteer. There's no, no one on their board or have any staff. They've just done some amazing things this, along with West Side Day, where they take over 800 students to Santa Fe to really learn about how the process works. But as we stated in the proclamation, and as Mr. Hernandez stated, is that it's really more of a community meeting. There's gonna be a lot of fun entertainment, lots of things to do, but it's really a community meeting where they survey the community and really get their input in terms of what they wanna see there in the future for the redevelopment of West Central. And yes, Councilor Borrego's always been a strong supporter, and Councilor Sanchez and the administration, the mayor's actually also contributed additional dollars this year too, so I really appreciate it. So thank you again, thank you for being here. Next item we have is administration question and answers, answer period. Councilors, are there any questions for the administration? Councilor Winter.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Jones and I were talking, we were kinda wondering what's happening with the helicopter?
Madam President, and Counselor Winter, and Counselor Jones, the helicopter under the contract that we have with the manufacturer is scheduled to be here before the end of the year. However, we've been informed that they are ahead of schedule, and we hope that we can get this, that the helicopter might be here within 45 to 50 days. So we're getting very close.
Councilor Borrego.
I would like to request at our next meeting that we have a report on our crime statistics. Citywide, please.
Madam President and Counselor, we will have APD here to give you a report. Thank you.
Councilor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. Last week, we had a horrific week with the number of homicides here in Albuquerque. I think there were six homicides. And today, with our specialized police units, I believe that we have six officers working in homicides, and I think there are four officers working in the gang unit. Can you verify that information and let me know what those numbers are? Madam President and Counselor Sanchez, I will have APD get you a report on the number of folks assigned to each of those units. Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
We'll move on to the Journal, item five, Councilor Borrego.
I move approval of the September 4th Journal.
There's a motion in second, a motion? I need a second. There's a motion in second for approval of the September 4th Journal. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now on item six, Communications and Introductions. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of allowing introductions at the special city council meeting. There's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of pulling EC 454 out of finance and government operations and placing it on tonight's agenda for action. EC 454 is the sole source purchase of two handheld backscatter x-ray imagers with accessories, warranty training, and support use for use at the Albuquerque International some port. There's a motion in the second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing OC 39 on tonight's agenda for action. OC 39 is the city clerk's correction of error and omission to the enactment of O-2019-019 regarding floor amendment one to O-1967 pursuant to Article Six, Section Seven of the City Charter, ROA Section One dash one dash 10.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing OC 40 and placing it on the October 7th council agenda for action. OC 40 is the appointment of Barbara Taylor to the Open Space Advisory Board. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Councilor Borrego.
I move approval of the letter of introduction.
Second.
There's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now on item seven, Reports of Committees. Councilor Sanchez for Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. In the matter of EC 454 and 455, that they be approved. In the matter of OC 37 and 38, that receipt be noted. In the matter of O-56, 57, and 76, that they be without recommendation as substituted. In the matter of O-73 and R-185, that they do pass. And in the matter of O-77, that it be without recommendation, I make a motion to accept the committee report.
There's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Councilor Benton. Welcome.
Hello. Where are we? LUPs? All right. Yes. All right, the Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee met on Wednesday, September 11th, 2019, and reports out the following items. In the matter of EC 457, that it be confirmed. In the matter of O-72, that it be without recommendation as amended. In the matter of R-186, that it do pass. I move to accept the committee reports.
So there's a...
So there's a motion in second to accept the report, the LUPs report. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Next item is deferrals and withdrawals. Councilors, are there any deferrals or withdrawals at this time?
I'm sorry, Madam President. Yes, I make a motion to defer until October the 21st, R-155. R-155 is a nuisance substandard dwelling in need of abatement at 600 Dallas Northeast.
There's a motion in second for deferral. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. I also move to defer until October 21st, R-156. R-156 is a nuisance substandard dwelling or structure in need of abatement, 8400 Chico Northeast.
There's a motion in the second. All those in favor for deferral say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now on item eight, Consent Agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? For the individuals on tonight's consent agenda who are being appointed to serve on a board or commission or committee, please stand if you're in the audience. Welcome, and thank you for your willingness to serve. We really appreciate it. Thank you. [applause] Councilor Borrego.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion in second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now on announcements. Councilor Benton.
Thank you, Madam President. There will be a Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on Wednesday, September 25th, at 5:00 PM in the council committee room on the ninth floor.
Councilor Davis.
There will be an Albuquerque-Burnaleo County Government Commission meeting on Thursday, September 26th, at 5:00 PM in these chambers.
Councilor Sanchez.
Thank you. There will be a lower Petchikliff Tax Increment Development District Board of Directors meeting on Monday, October the 7th, at 3:00 PM in the council committee room on the ninth floor.
There will be an Albuquerque-Burnaleo County Water Utility Authority meeting on Wednesday, September 25th, at 5:00 PM in the Vincent E. Gallego Chambers. There will be an Internal Operations Committee meeting on Monday, October 7th, at 4:00 PM in the council committee room on the ninth floor. We are now on item 10, approvals. There are none. Now on item 11, final actions. Councilor Benton.
Madam President, I had one question. Is there not going to be public comment this evening?
No, there is no public comment at the special meeting, so if people wanna sign up for public comment on the specific bills, they're more than welcome to.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure there was clarification on that.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. I move a do pass on O-74. This is authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Albuquerque taxable Industrial Revenue Bond Series 2019 in the maximum principal amount of $36 million to provide funds to finance the equipping of a manufacturing facility. Nipro Healthcare Baja Incorporated authorizing the execution, delivery of an indenture, lease agreement, bond purchase agreement, bond, and other documents. I move a do pass. And Madam President, I move a floor substitute for O-74, which is being distributed.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for floor sub to O-1974. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Back on the bill. Councilor Benton.
Just, Madam President, I'll just defer to the council if they have any questions about it. This is a, this is a industrial revenue bond.
Okay. Councilor Gibson, and then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Madam President. And Councilor Benton, what is the, what is the amount on that IRB?
It's a $36 million.
$36 million?
Yes.
And then it's followed up with a lead of totaling $1 million, right?
I think that's correct, but I would defer to the administration.
Ms. Amios here to describe the, or to present the issue.
Thank you, Director. So I'm just wondering about the use for that, what, I'm sorry, $36 million? Is that what I heard, $35 million? For the IRBs? What is, what's the intended use for that?
Certainly, I'm happy, Council President and members of the council, Councilor Gibson, I am happy, I have a brief description of the project, and if I would be allowed to present that, it's very brief in explaining the project. We also have the company present. We also have Chris Muirhead, our bond counsel, who is also here to address the project participation agreement. Any points regarding the agreement? And also, the Bureau Business Research Institute at UNM is also here. Would you like me to move forward with the presentation?
Yes, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So what is on the agenda tonight is the authorization, the issuance and sale of the City of Albuquerque's industrial revenue bonds for the Nipro Healthcare Project Series 2019. And as Councilor Benton mentioned, we also seek approval of an ordinance approving the adoption of a Local Economic Development Act project for the Nipro Healthcare or J-Bill as we've been presenting it, and authorization of the execution of a project participation agreement. Now, these two projects are almost identical between analysis. These two projects fit what city council has come to expect in terms of job creation, job maintenance, operations for at least 10 years, and the appropriate clawbacks and penalties have also been included. Now, again, I'd like to point out, right over here, we have Chris Muirhead. Deb Inman is also here from the Albuquerque Economic Development, our private sector partner is also here, Julian Baca from Bieber, and also, again, the job creator, the company, William Wright, who is the plant quality assurance manager who could answer any questions regarding the company.
Thank you.
This legislation would approve the issuance and sale of the 20-year industrial revenue bond in the amount of $36 million requested by Nipro Healthcare Baja, Inc., to support the acquisition of advanced manufacturing equipment for the company's healthcare design and manufacturing services and products. The project is located at 3801 University Boulevard Southeast in Albuquerque near I-25 and Rio Bravo, the old Ethicon Building, next to the University of New Mexico Golf Course. The project relates to the company's intention for the Albuquerque facility to be a national center for excellence for 3D in advanced manufacturing in the medical production field. The company is a subsidiary of J-Bill, Inc., which is one of the world's largest contract manufacturing firms for medical products and devices. The company's services include to ideation, to device development support, engineering, supply chain optimization, and device assembly operations. The company is solely responsible for repaying the bonds. No city taxpayer funds are involved. The company projects the creation of 120 new positions in addition to the existing 364 positions which will remain in Albuquerque due to the selection of the Albuquerque facility for the company's expansion. Now, of the 120 new positions, 70 will be production jobs with starting average salaries of more than $40,000 without benefits, which equates to about $20 an hour, and an average annual salary of $64,000, including benefits. The remaining 50 positions are non-production jobs with an average annual salary of $92,000, including benefits. Other employee benefits include competitive medical, dental, and vision insurance. Other employee benefits include competitive medical, dental, and vision insurance, disability insurance, 401K savings plan, employee stock purchase plan, paid time off, ten paid holidays, bereavement leave, and, um, shift differential. The company intends to provide training to all new employees and to avail itself of the state's job training incentive program in connection with the training of its employees. The company's expansion of operations at the Albuquerque facility will help advance an economic development project that fosters, promotes, and enhances local economic development efforts and provides job growth and career opportunities. Industrial revenue bonds, as you know, provide real and personal property tax abatements as well as gross receipt compensation tack, tax exemptions on furnishings and equipment purchased with bond proceeds. It is the company, not the city, that intends to invest approximately thirty-six million for the equipment plus an additional three point six million on tenant improvements, which is expected to be through local contractors. The company expects to continue to spend at least eight, eight point six million annually on goods and services with an annual increase of five to ten percent. The fiscal analysis for the project shows that the company will be making a substantive contribution to the city. And the Albuquerque Development Commission approved unanimously the project, um, at their meeting on August fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Now, that is, uh, the information for the IRB.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. So, uh, what I got from that was, uh, medical equipment, it was going to be used for medical equipment and furnishings?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, very good.
Certainly.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Very helpful.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Borrego.
Um, I'd like to know, um, what the IRBs, how many years are, um, out does that go to for the thirty-six million?
At this time, I'd like to invite Chris Muirhead. He can refer to our project participa, patient agreement. Chris?
Thank you. Madam President, Counselor, it's a twenty-year term for the Industrial Revenue Bond, uh, where they will be getting the property tax abatement on that equipment for the term of that bond, with a payment in lieu of taxes to the city of five percent over that, that same period.
Okay. And, um, besides the jobs that are, um, in this report, are there, um, projected future jobs being developed, additional?
Madam President, Counselor, the...
Or is there like a scale or something?
The hundred and twenty, I think, is what they are projecting, with the seventy in the production and the fifty in, in the administrative side. So I think that's looking out as they build out this facility. That's the number they're looking at, with the key part also being that the three sixty-four stays in Albuquerque.
Okay. And then, uh, Bieber's report, it says that there was a positive, um, let's see what it said, positive impact or something to the city? Positive return to the city? What does that mean exactly, besides?
Yes, Counselor, Madam President, Counselor. So they run it, I apologize, I don't have it in front of me, but they run an analysis looking at what the tax abatement is going to be. One, on the gross receipts tax abatement when they purchase the equipment at the thirty-six million dollars. And then they'll look at the benefit of their role in the community, the jobs, the salaries, uh, the extended gross receipts taxes those employees stay and work. And then they determine, one, on the one hand, related to the IRB, that the benefit of giving that tax abatement to them on the real, on the property and on the gross receipts tax is recovered, uh, plus a positive return to the city over the term of the bond. As related to the, the next ordinance, but the LEDA side of it, they're looking at it and saying, is the state going to get the seven fifty value out of it? And is the city going to get the two hundred and fifty thousand value out of it? And in their determination that based, again, on the economic activity by the company as well as employees, they determine that, yes, over the term of the agreements, the city will recoup the, the expenditure it's making in LEDA and foregoing on the IRB aspect of it over the term of that bond and have a positive return through the transaction.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we'll go to public comment. Ms. Geraldine Amato?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Now, I'm not fully informed on all the dynamics of the bond program. But I remember that former Fed Chair, Alan Greenspan, had an essay he wrote when he was a young man in the nineteen sixties. There was three essays. I can't remember the title of that one, that he was discussing bonds. But I remember one poignant statement when he said, "The bonds are a program for confiscating wealth." In other words, the way I see it, you promised all these building projects and what you were just talking about, all the promises made. And yet, at the end of the projects and the programs, the wealth is in somebody's hands other than the, uh, the corporate political body that issued the bonds or the people in the community that vote on them. How that actually is transmitted, um, requires a little thinking to explain it. But I can, I can comprehend that it does happen that way. That these bonds are issued for the ostensible purposes, which were articulated a few minutes ago. And yet, the promises are high and the deliverance is low when it comes down to it. As far as healthcare projects in itself, my recent stay in the Lovelace Complex Hospitals, I realized that the service industry, the people that actually provide the services to the people that need healthcare, so-called, are under a lot of stress. Many are working, uh, eight-hour shifts with no breaks. If they're dedicated people, they don't take their breaks because they know the people under their care need their help. And nothing is being done to correct the dynamic, as far as I can see. Those who have less concern for the sick will neglect the sick because of that. There's not enough service care people working within these institutions. And these bond issues don't really address those issues. They never get around to that. And you're not even able to issue them for that purpose to bolster...
Thank you, Ms. Amato. Your, uh, time is up.
Yeah, whatever. You always say that, but just give me the measly two minutes without interrupting me.
I appreciate it.
You know, whether you think it's relevant or not, it is relevant.
Thank you.
Just because you don't get it doesn't mean it's not relevant.
Thank you.
Is my time up?
Yes, your time is up. Thank you.
You're really polite about it, too. I come here just to share what I have learned. You don't appreciate anything I have to offer.
Thank you.
You're always insulting me with interruptions.
Thank you.
No questions.
So, um, we are now, um, Counselor Benton.
Thank you. So we're, uh, back in the bill. Uh, we did move the floor sub, or?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, um, any other discussion? Well, let's see, uh...
Council President and Counselor, Counselor Benton. Um, the company would like an opportunity to address the council. May I invite the company down?
Good afternoon. Madam President and council members, on behalf of the plant manager, John Silva, who is not able to be here today, and our staff, I'd like to thank the following people in support of Jabil and our Albuquerque facility. Mayor Keller, the city administration, the city economic development department, Governor Michelle Luhon Grisham, Cabinet Secretary Alicia Keys, State Economic Development Department, AED, and of course, this is city council for the consideration for the IRB and the LEDA. The history of our facility, it opened in nineteen eighty-two. As a suture facility, we transformed to a medical device manufacturer in the early nineteen nineties. Transformed, again, to a packaging of medical device center of excellence in the mid nineteen nineties. Added a sterilization center of excellence in the, in nineteen ninety-six and two thousand. Added direct distribution capabilities to our portfolio in the late two thousands. Still have associates working the day that the doors were open in nineteen eighty-two. They're about ready to retire after thirty-five years of working with Ethicon Endosurgery and Jabil. Majority of the professional workforce is going to gather this weekend as U N M and New Mexico State meet in a football game. The majority of our professionals have graduated from our universities, either with their bachelors or their masters, and in some cases, both. The talent, our capability for growth, and the history of our transformation in the medical device his, industry is why Jabil selected the site to be the center of excellence of our new transformation, three D printing. Jabil is a worldwide contract manufacturer in multiple industries. They are the name behind the brand. Jabil is located in twenty-six countries and approximately two hundred thousand employees. The Albuquerque site will be utilizing the Mexico talent to manufacture medical implant uses the latest technology, three D printing. The site is partner, partnering with, uh, C N M to develop and train associates in the latest technology. The potential in this new technology is endless for this site. The new technology will position the Albuquerque site for continued growth in the medical device industry. And just want to thank you for your consideration and the time spent in reviewing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Counselor Borrego has a question for this.
On the LEDA?
On the LEDA? Okay, okay. Counselor Benton.
Counselors, I urge your support. This is a great opportunity to keep this facility here in Albuquerque and, and, uh, have it turn a very important page.
There's a motion and a second for oh seventy-four as substituted. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Counselor Benton, oh seventy-five.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, oh seventy-five is approving a project involving Nipo Healthcare Baja Incorporated pursuant to the Local Economic Development Act and city ordinance floor substitute oh, oh, uh, oh four-ten to support the renovation and improvement of healthcare manufacturing facilities in Albuquerque, authorizing the execution of the project participation agreement and other documents, making certain determinations and findings related to the project, including the appropriation of funds. I move a do-pass.
There's a motion and a second for a do-pass. Um, before I go to the counselors, we actually have one person signed up to speak. Did you wanna? You want to go ahead and read your stuff, Ms.?
Sure.
Yeah.
Certainly. Thank you, Council President. Now, um, in, in reference to this legislation, this legislation authorizes an ordinance for the adoption and approval of the Nipro Baja Healthcare, Inc., Local Economic Development Act project. A project participation agreement and funds in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There is also an anticipated state contribution of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for which the city will act as the fiscal agent. This project would support the expansion of the company's business operations for the manufacturing of healthcare-related products in Albuquerque and upgrade its two hundred and thirty, the two hundred and thirty-three thousand approximately square foot facility. Regarding the rest of the, the details, these projects are almost identical. I could read the details and also ask, uh, Chris Muirhead to talk about the project participation agreement, but they are almost identical.
Counselor Davis.
Uh, Madam Director, thank you. Very quickly, I just noticed in the write-up that it mentioned that there's a, a payment in lieu of taxes sort of option on this. It just, but it just says five percent. Can you just clarify for me? Is that five percent of what exactly, and what do we think that'll net to the city?
Certainly, Alex. Certainly, Alex, Krista.
Uh, Madam President, Counselor Davis, that actually ties to the Industrial Revenue Bond, so it's five percent of the real property taxes on the, the equipment as it's depreciated over its life. Yes, sir.
Okay, well, um, since we're going ahead and asking questions, I'll go to Counselor Borrego. She had a question before we go to public comment.
Yes, I had a question about the, um, actual, the LEDA funds and the, the actual fund. And according to this, it says that there's an available, available balance of eight million, six hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven. And I'm just trying to see, I guess, we are providing pretty close to that amount? No?
No, Counselor Borrego. I'm not sure what, um, what document you're referring to.
Oh, you don't have it. It's our write-up.
Got it.
So, uh, maybe Stephanie?
Yes, Madam President, Counselor Borrego. So, the eight point six million dollars that's referred to in the staff write-up is the balance of the LEDA fund in the Capital Improvement Project Fund, three oh five, for use on other future LEDA projects, this one, um, and others.
So what amount are we providing to this?
I believe it's two hundred and fifty thousand of city LEDA funds that are being provided through this.
Okay, so we still have a balance. Can you tell me, um, how the LEDA fund gets re, refunded? I mean, re, plant, yeah, replenished?
Replenish. Uh, that is a very good question, Counselor Borrego, and I'm glad you asked that. And that is at the pleasure of city counselor, uh, city council. We could get back to you on the, uh, balance of the fund. And, um, I am happy to discuss that further at a later time with you.
So, just a question, quick question. Do, do these projects, as we're funding and using our LEDA, uh, fund, I guess, uh, fund three oh five, I think it is, when we, when we put money into these projects from LEDA, do they have a percentage that comes back into that fund?
No, ma'am. No, Counselor.
So we have to replenish them by our action here?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Sanchez.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank this council. I think that we have been very diligent. And also, Mrs. Hata Mio, for your work in, uh, work on these LEDA fundings and some of the projects that are coming to Albuquerque. Uh, we've got Netflix, NBC Universal. This project, uh, is, is going to be an excellent project for our community. I was at the groundbreaking ceremony. The governor was there, the mayor was there. And there's some remarkable work that is going to be done with this company. I think it's going to just continue to grow, uh, here in the city of Albuquerque.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we'll go to public comment. Ms. Geraldine Amato?
Good evening. I believe the healthcare industry, which is touted as a very good investment for business enterprises on public, uh, television, on their nightly business report, is because of the medical device industry. Not because the care of inpatients are being improved by these devices. But that's fueling the healthcare industry. And when, on page two here, line eighteen through, uh, twenty-two, provides that the company will grant to the city a security instrument to secure the company's obligations under the agreement, agreement. So it seems all loaded in favor of what the company chooses to do, not what the city chooses to do. But, the fact is that, when it comes down to it, whatever, under the, uh, we, uh, do this pledge to the flag saying the republic. Under the principles of the republic, a corporation or a company's charter could be revoked by the people when it violates the public trust or the promise for which it is engaged in business. But under the current Uniform Commercial Code, there is no such protective policy. Companies usually get away with violating whatever promises they make in contracts. And if, uh, people pressure them too much, they declare bankruptcy and they never pay off even the financial, um, assessments put on them. So without having the principles of the, of the republic, the dynamic under which we work, there's no way of holding private companies who, which have charters in perpetuity and have civil rights according to, uh, the federal Supreme Court decisions. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Amato. Um, so Counselor Benton to close.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are no other, uh, no other discussion from the council. Uh, I, uh, urge your support on oh seventy-five.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are now on R one eighty-seven. Benton, Davis, and Gibson.
Madam Chair, R one eighty-seven is endorsing the declaration of a climate emergency, creating a climate action plan for the City of Albuquerque, and requesting regional collaboration on a just transition and emergency mobilization effort to restore a safe climate. I move a do-pass.
There's a motion and a second for a do-pass. Are there any questions from any of the counselors? Counselor Gibson?
Uh, just that, we do have an amendment.
Correct. So, um, would you like to?
I, I don't have it.
This is the only copy of it? I'll give it to you.
We have an amendment, but I don't have it. Now I do. Thank you. So this is, uh, amending R nineteen one eighty-seven. On page three, line sixteen, after the term framework, strike the rest of the sentence. And then, on page three, line... the rest of the sentence. And then, on page three, line 16, insert of its ongoing and future climate change goals, projects, and programs. The explanation is, "The city is already addressing all but one of the strategies identified in the 2009 CAP." Experts recommend taking immediate action rather than planning efforts." And I'll move the amendment.
So, there's a motion and a second for amendment to R-187. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Counselor Gibson, anything else?
No. Thank you.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are any number of things about this resolution that concern me, not the least of which that it says specifically that we, there was a, in 2008, the city of Albuquerque reassembled a task force to develop a plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the city by 80% by the year 2050. I don't see, I've not seen a plan to that effect, and yet here we are approving a resolution to, to require administration, administrative costs for climate education and outreach activities. However, we don't know what those costs are. We don't know where the money's coming from, but we, the council, are supposed to appropriate, appropriate that money at the time. My question is, what are we going to teach? Who are we going to teach? Do we have any kind of an estimate of the cost? And how can we, as a council, pass something that says we will pay for it when we have no idea exactly what it's going to do and how much it's going to cost?
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Actually, we have a list of speakers here. I think there's 15 people signed up to speak for public comment under R-187. And as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, you know, this was an unanticipated special meeting, and several of the counselors have other prior commitments, so we're trying to do this in a, in a more efficient manner. So, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have a minute for public comment, and we will start with Suki Wampler, followed by Athena, followed by Mark Leclerc. And if you can make your way to the front, we'd really appreciate it. So, we have our first speakers here this evening.
Hi, my name is Sage. I'm nine years old.
Hi, my name is Suki. I'm nine years old.
We are members of the Global Warming Express Program at the Mount Mahogany Community School.
We are worried.
Animals are dying because of how much fossil fuels we are burning.
Animals are dying because of the carbon dioxide we are making.
Animals are dying because of how much plastic we are dumping into the ocean.
According to the journal Science, about 10 million tons of plastic trash are dumped into the ocean every year.
The average person in the United States makes about five pounds of trash per day.
In fact, the United States makes 40% of the world's trash, but it only holds 5% of its people.
We want Albuquerque to lead by not using as much fossil fuels and using solar and wind energy instead. This is why we want every single one of you to vote in favor of the climate emergency resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that was adorable, but we really can't have any applause during this, so thank you. Athena?
Yes, Madam Penya Council. I'm Athena Christodoulou. I'm not here as an environmental engineer or the president of New Mexico Solar Energy Association, but as a mom and tech-focused entrepreneur. Okay, my friends, we're going into an emergency situation. Yes, I want you to pass the R-19187 as a mom because I want to safeguard my kids, your kids, and these kids' future. Your small step to accept the truth about climate change will begin the process of providing the solutions. But most importantly, as an entrepreneur, I also see opportunity. We're pretty solid up here, high and dry, you could say, with three national, and with three national labs, trade schools, and two state universities within an easy morning drive. We should be and could be leading the nation in tech transfer of the solutions. By passing this, this resolution, you would be opening the door to opportunity for Albuquerque to be a star in providing a safe and livable future. Please vote yes on this resolution.
Thank you. Mark? Leclerc, followed by John Fullschulz, followed by Don Schrader.
Yeah, good afternoon. I just wanna build off of what the kids just said. You know, our top scientists are telling us that we really shouldn't even be calling this climate change anymore. Dr. James Hanson of NASA made it clear that this is, this is an emergency situation that we're now facing. And people are increasingly worried. You know, 2/3 of all Americans are now worried about climate change, according to the recent poll. Our kids are increasingly worried, and we're really looking to our leaders. And at this time, we don't expect you to solve climate change for us, but we wanna see that you're confronting it. And it would really make me feel good about our city. I think it would make our youth feel good about our city to see a unanimous vote here tonight in favor of this declaration. And that vote would just signify that we're ready to face the truth about the moment that we're in. Thank you.
John? Followed by Don Schrader, followed by Chuck Buckspahn?
Madam President, counselors, good, good evening. John Buckholz. As Albuquerque's First Green Building Program Manager, I participated in the preparation of our current climate action plan. I'm here today to show my support for updating that plan, and more importantly, I'm here today to show my support for implementing the policies in that plan. Thank you very much.
Counselor Borrego.
I just wanna say hello to John. We worked together for many, many years.
Mr. Don Schrader.
Hi, Counselor.
Will people 50 years from now curse us today for being too spoiled, too lazy, too blind, too stubborn, too selfish, if we refuse to wake up and make huge personal changes in how we live? I've ridden in no car for 18 years. I ride city buses, but I mostly walk. Much healthier for me and for the earth. I've ridden in no plane for over 40 years. I've eaten no meat, no dairy for over 20 years. Watch the documentary Cowspiracy on DVD or the internet showing how eating meat and dairy is one huge cause of climate crisis. Come this Friday, September 20th, to Robinson Park, 8th and Central, at 1:00 PM for the Climate Justice Event as millions worldwide walk out of workplaces, classrooms, and homes to take a stand.
Chuck Buckspahn, followed by Tom Solomon, followed by Francine Kronchak. Who, Don, Chuck? Okay, Tom?
Thank you, Madam President and counselors. My name is Tom Solomon. I'm with 350.org, 350 New Mexico. Our name comes from an answer that famous climate scientist James Hanson gave to our co-founder. What is the maximum level of carbon dioxide allowed in the atmosphere before we start to see really damaging effects from global warming? And that answer was 350 parts per million. Throughout all of human history, we never exceeded 280 parts per million, and that kept our climate fairly stable. It has been rising at 2 parts per million ever since the Industrial Revolution. It passed 350 in 1988, and this current year, it exceeded 415 parts per million. And we are on a path to extinguish human civilization if we don't act boldly. A couple of examples of how that's happening are the massive hurricanes that we see in the Caribbean, like Hurricane Dorian that we just experienced, a hurricane that should have been category three but turned into a category five. So, I urge you yes vote because we are really in a climate emergency. Thank you.
Thank you. Francine? Followed by Daisy Cortez, followed by M. Ward.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm a longtime member of the Green Party, and we feel very strongly that, given the lack of national leadership on the climate question, that having good action at the state and local level is, is highly important. And I would like to echo Counselor Jones's reservations or comments and hope to hear from you more about exactly what's gonna happen with this. And thank you.
Daisy Cortez.
Hello, Madam President and council members. My name is Daisy Cortez. We are in a climate crisis. I'm not here to convert anyone who doesn't believe that this is the situation. But we have student organizers organizing a climate strike. There will be walking out of school on Friday because they believe that it's that serious, and I stand with them in that belief. We're not asking, as Mark said, for city council to fix this problem for us. We're simply asking that you represent the people's interests in taking the climate crisis seriously. This is something that we have to mobilize around as individuals, as businesses, as representatives, and it's going to be a team effort that, in my opinion, will either send us towards or take us away from mass extinction of life on this planet. I look forward to Albuquerque being a leader in the climate crisis and following cities like Los Angeles and taking this seriously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ward.
Madam President, counselors, R-19187 endorses the declaration of a climate emergency and lays out a set of action items. I have concerns. I do not want the banner of climate emergency to cover hidden agendas with regard to urbanization and transportation. I do not want the pole on which climate flag is waved to be a club to beat the public into submission. Council's past determination to rewrite the comprehensive plan and eliminate sector development plans, what in practice has been reduced constraints on development in ecologically sensitive lands and erosion of public input under the Integrated Development Ordinance, the ongoing fiasco that is Albuquerque Rapid Transit, a project that sacrificed local businesses and local transportation access on the altar of federal dollars and apparently will not use electric vehicles, are all example of this body's dubious acts. I believe in the power and potential of science and technology to help alleviate the world's problems. Unfortunately, that power and potential can be used toward nefarious ends when subjugated to the pursuit of profit and power. I'm a climate believer and a council skeptic. Thanks.
Thank you. Bill Ramfro, followed by Arcelia Ayasus, followed by Ani Hanna.
Good evening. I am a professional geoscientist that worked 34 years with operators of the fossil fuel industry, oil and gas, in Texas, cleaning up contamination sites, groundwater, soil, and surface water. We are at the end of a, or the last vestige of an ice age, but we, as humans, have exponentially proceeded to increase the greenhouse gases, carbon gases, since the Industrial Revolution. The warming of the Arctic is going twice as fast as expected. We are in warming seas which produce strong storms. Our rainforests are being destroyed. We must treat this as an emergency and act now.
Thank you. Arcelia, followed by Ani, followed by Athena.
Thank you, Madam President and council members. My name's Arcelia Sais, and I'm a fellow with Environment New Mexico. We're a statewide citizen-based environmental advocacy organization dedicated to protecting our air, water, and open spaces. Here in the desert, we are already seeing the impacts of global climate change. Longer droughts, increased wildfires, higher heat-related illnesses and deaths. We know that as our climate continues to change, these will continue getting worse. For this reason, we stand in strong support of Resolution 187 declaring a climate emergency. This is the right time to pass this declaration because we can set a plan in place to stop the worst impacts of climate change and doing it in a responsible manner that makes sense for New Mexico's communities. The city of Albuquerque has consistently been a leader in building momentum for a cleaner future, and we urge you to support this resolution so we can continue being a role model for the rest of the state and the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Ani, Athena, and Liam.
Dear Madam President and members of the council, my name is Ani Hanna, and I'm a mom who organizes to protect the earth every day. What most excites me about this climate action plan is that it brings a high level of public awareness to our climate emergency. Our community as a whole needs to know that we're on track to lose 1 million species, the UN said that, and we're losing our forests and we're losing our sources of water. This action plan calls for a diverse partnership, including youth, educators, organizations, lawmakers, businesses, churches. That's the kind of public awareness of climate emergency that we need. People need to know this is not a debate. This is not controversial. This is climate emergency. And we, together, if we, as a community, can do this, we can be unstoppable. I'm looking for a unanimous vote tonight. Thank you so much.
Athena?
Hi, I'm Athena, and I'm eight years old. Dear city council members, imagine if the streets weren't as loud. People were healthier, and the city, and the city was easier to get around. We wouldn't need to frack for more oil and cars. What if we were known for not increasing pollution, but for what we're doing to stop climate change? This is what Albuquerque could look like if we were the most walkable and bicycle-friendly city, just like the climate action plan says. Being the most bicycle-friendly city is important to me because it would allow us to be a cleaner city, and then other places might follow our lead. Implementing this climate action plan will allow us to do this and much more than that is needed to reverse the effects of climate change. Please vote for the climate emergency resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Liam?
Hi, my name is Liam Castren, and I'm 10 years old. For the climate emergency plan, I think that we should not use cars. We should walk and bike more. First, if we do this, we will see a change in our neighborhood if we bike and walk. I've been biking since I was two years old, and I want to see a change in my future, so we should become more bike-and-walk friendly. And this will result with clean air. We need, because we're not releasing carbon dioxide into the air. We need to rearrange for the climate change. Please vote for this climate resolution, emergency resolution.
Alex Hanna, followed by Adrian Hanna, followed up by Aubrey, followed by Imesi, followed by Valeria.
Okay. Dear city council members, think of all the buildings in Albuquerque, the hospitals, grocery stores, warehouses. Imagine them with, imagine all of them with big blue solar panels on the roofs, all the electricity being powered by the sun, and our neighbors will be happier because they know they are committing to helping the big problem of climate change and global warming. You might not see it at first, but everything contributes to climate change. How we drive, how we grow our food, how we design buildings, these all need to change, and this action plan is gonna help us get there. I say that this just, not just be on the action plan. It should be our new reality. What do you all, what do all you say to that? I say that we should act now and get those solar panels up. Please vote for this climate emergency resolution. And that's the end of what I wrote here, but I'd like to say that there's gonna be a climate strike on September 20th, like my mama says, be there or be square.
Dear city council members, each transatlantic flight melts 30 square feet of ice. I know that sounds like a lot, but- I know that sounds like a lot, but I read the scientific research. Flying our food places is crazy. Think about the amount of emissions. Eleven percent of all greenhouse gases from food production comes directly from food transport. One person eating locally grown food for a year will reduce greenhouse gas emissions in an amount equivalent to driving one thousand miles. We need more locally grown food available for us to buy in Albuquerque. In order for this to happen, the local government needs to give the farmers and consumers more incentives. The climate action plan would provide those incentives. Please vote for the climate emergency resolution.
Thank you. Aubrey.
I think my sister wants to speak.
My name is Ariana and I'd just like to say, I declare for a climate emergency.
So now Aubrey.
Good evening, Chairwoman and City Counselors. My name is Aubrey Amon and I'm a local high school student and climate activist. And the reason why I'm here today is simple. I love the city where I live, but currently, climate change is threatening many of the things that I love most about it. I love the Rio Grande, but climate change may soon cause this river to dry. I love our low cost of living, but if our current emissions continue, that too will suffer due to increased utility costs and paying for AC. I love New Mexican food, but the warming temperatures and droughts caused by climate change are harming our agriculture and giving us less crops to cook with. I love the view of the Sandia Mountains with their beautiful green forests, but as our emission levels grow higher, so does their risk of forest fires. But most of all, Counselors, I love having a City Council that is brave enough to bring forward this resolution and acknowledge that climate change is currently the largest threat that we, as a city, a state, a nation, and a species face. So today, the city of Albuquerque must affirm this resolution before climate change leaves us all with little left to love. Thank you.
Thank you. Imesi, followed by Valeria. Okay. Valerie, Valeria, here. Okay. And then Katira, and then Camilla.
Madam President, members of the Council, I'm here today because, I mean, for me, this is the greatest problem of my generation. I know people who are in constant just pain every day because they don't know what the point of living anymore is. If by 2050, things won't change, if we reach that, our deadline by 2050, they just, they don't see the point of going to school, they don't see the point of following their dreams anymore. I don't see the point of following my dreams. Everything is changing so fast. Animals are dying, people, this doesn't just affect the living and the dying, this is psychological. The pain that it causes, everything that is happening. I mean, I don't want to lose my hope for the future, but it's changing fast and I know that this isn't, for me, this isn't just about our future, this is about our now. This isn't a problem that we will face tomorrow for the next day, it's something that we need to face now, or else everything could be lost.
Thank you. Thank you. Katiri.
Hello, Madam President, Counselors, thank you. My name is Katiri Sava. Thanks for your time. I work with many students and youth in New Mexico, teaching in gardens and on farms, and I listen to these youth and what I hear from them is extreme concern about the climate, about what it means to play outside, to learn outside, to grow food. Our communities are doing what they can to organize, but this requires real structural change and many of the students are walking out this Friday to get your attention about that. Please listen to the youth, all of the youth here today, and please declare a climate emergency so that they don't have to face this crisis and their futures along. Thank you.
Thank you. Camilla, followed by Delisi, followed by Josh Parks, followed by Rachel Moore.
Hi, I'm Camilla Feibleman. I'm the Director of the Rio Grande Chapter of the Sierra Club. We represent thirty-five thousand members and supporters throughout the state and West Texas. So first, thank you, Madam Chair and members, for hearing this resolution and for the progress that you've already made towards solar operations for the city, reconsidering upping our building codes. I will say, climate change is a little like bringing a three-year-old to a City Council meeting, except it's not cute. We had what I call our climate summer last year. Girl Scout Camp in the Jimenez was canceled because of forest fires. Our roof failed in the July hailstorm and our house was flooded and we were out of it for two months. The insurance industry paid ten times out last year in hail damage than they had in any year previous to that, and all of those are real local examples of climate change. I want to commend the students leading us. I started in this movement at Albuquerque High School, founding Students for Environmental Action a really long time ago, and it's great to see your legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Delisi, followed by Josh Parks, followed by Rachel Moore, followed by Benton Howell.
Hi, I just want to thank you all for being here and considering this resolution. My name is Delise Delios and I am here today as a mom and also an organizer working with many of these youth. Today, youth from all over the globe, including Greta Thunberg, testified before Congress about the climate crisis. Her message, listen to the science. In two days, young people, perhaps millions, including all of the youth in this room, will strike against the status quo of complacency in action and injustice on climate change. All of these voices collectively demand a livable future. This moment is so vital because we have known for decades that global warming is a threat to all of us and we have chosen to do virtually nothing. Under business as usual, emissions from the burning of fossil fuels and forests have led us to an incredibly dangerous place. For most of us adults, we have remained comfortable in our way of life. Many of us don't get the existential dangers that climate crisis will bring, and I'm just asking you today to take the bold step forward and act as if our house is on fire, because it is. Hear the youth voices and don't give them hope, give them decisive action.
Thank you. Josh Parks, followed by Rachel Moore.
Hello, Council members. Thank you for hearing me. I'd just like to start by saying that I'm very excited and pleased to see this resolution on the docket because I really can't see any issue more pressing than climate change. And I think all those who have spoken before me have illustrated that very deftly and inspirationally. You know, the International Panel on Climate Change has given a decade or less of room to take meaningful action to stop the worst of these effects. And it's to the point where, as a college student, I often debate if I ought to even finish my schooling because it seems at every moment that I'm not spending actively working to solve this problem, this time gone out the window. And so I really hope that you will, that you feel the same way and you will vote in favor of this, this very important piece of legislation. And I'll be at the climate strike on Friday, so look forward to seeing everyone there. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Moore, followed by Benton Howell.
Madam President, Counselors, my name is Rachel Moore. Empirical evidence demonstrates that the actions we take today in response to the global climate crisis will determine the state of our planet's biospheric life support systems for the next ten thousand years and possibly beyond. Addressing this daunting challenge requires that we take exponential steps in this moment towards the regeneration of our shared land, air, and water resources that enable the vitality and persistence of life on this planet. The climate crisis creates a lot of anxiety, stress, and uncertainty for people, but to take steps forward, all we have to do is show up. We need to see the steps and before us, we have clear steps to take climate action here in Albuquerque. And so I ask that you today vote in favor of this resolution to declare a climate emergency and to pursue a climate action plan for the city of Albuquerque. We need to take action now to create a future that is livable and just for all.
Thank you. Benton Howell, followed by Brandon Baca.
Hello, my name is Benton Howell. I'm a retired physicist and a climate activist and a member of 350. I have two grandchildren who I'm here to fight for, for their right to a healthy, fulfilling life. I recognize that there is now a climate emergency, that we have to take strong actions to limit the temperature increase to 1.5 degrees C above pre-industrial levels, if we can. We know that the present global warming of one degree C is already having devastating effects. I'm here to support the bill, R-19187 Declaration of Climate Emergency, and Albuquerque can be a global leader by signing onto this declaration of an emergency mobilization effort to restore a safe climate. We must do this as quickly as possible. We must attack the emergency situation as if our lives depended on it, and they very well may. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon Baca, followed by Blaze, followed by Olivia, followed by Simon.
Madam President and Counselors, my name is Brandon Baca and I've been born and raised in Albuquerque and I've been working with refugees and forced migrants here in Albuquerque for over twelve years. A lot of the populations that I work with come from areas of Africa, Central America, the Middle East, and parts of Asia that are all being disproportionately affected by global climate change, and that's part of the reason why I'm speaking here today. Currently, we're dealing with the worst forced migration crisis in our history and human history. Over sixty-five million people are currently displaced forcibly in the world, and that matter is only going to get much, much worse when exacerbated by climate change. And I also want to make a comment regarding the question of what's the cost. I encourage us all to think about what the cost is going to be of inaction in the face of climate change. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please hold your applause. Blaze, followed by Olivia, followed by Simon.
Hi. So I wanted to tell you all a story that occurred this time last year when me and a group of students got to stay in the Greater Chaco region a few days and learn about the fracking that is happening in the northwestern part of our state and what its consequences and effects are. What had, or, we had the opportunity to listen to and hear from Navajo and Pueblo community leaders there that live in the area and have to live with this reality every day. If we are going to talk about the climate crisis and how urgent it is that we take every action conceivable to have a habitable earth in the future, we can start by talking about what is happening within our own state and how already historically marginalized communities are being hit hardest and first by environmental injustice and climate change. First, some facts. Ninety-one percent of public land in northwestern New Mexico is already leased to oil and gas with forty thousand wells. The threat is not imminent, it's already happening. Over northern New Mexico, there is a 2,500-square-foot methane cloud, the biggest in the history of the US methane, or methane as a greenhouse gas, it is eighty-four times or potent than the carbon dioxide. Okay, I'm just going to say a little bit more because our earth needs more than one minute to talk about it. There is a deep cognitive dissonance in American consumers' capitalist culture, one of believing in infinite growth while living on a planet with finite resources and life-giving essence. To keep the mirage going, our governments and corporations steal from lands and people while ignoring the clear evidence that these practices are already hurting people and the earth. Being born of the earth and her elements, our health is inextricably tied to that of the land around us. Going on the Greater Chaco, growing around the Greater Chaco region here in the streets of Navajo and Pueblo leaders, we saw how this unsustainable way of overconsumption is disproportionately impacting the health and well-being of already marginalized communities. But this is an issue that will affect everyone very soon, to a lesser or greater extent. Everyone on this planet needs clean air and clean water to exist. These are the basis of life and it should not be radical to ask that everyone is able to live in an environment that is clean, healthy, and essentially conducive to life.
Blaze, you're reading really fast, but you're out of time, sorry.
I'm almost done.
Appreciate it.
All the waters are connected to each other like the veins of the earth. One cannot be separated from one another.
We're going on to the next speaker.
All must be healthy, have a lovable future for the next generations when one being his president.
Thank you, Blaze. Olivia Gonzalez.
It is a responsibility of all of us to stop the damage from continuing and help restore what we can from the wreckage before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that, you know, those things just take away from other people's and, you know, I actually asked for a personal courtesy because we didn't ask for this meeting to be a special meeting and, you know, other counselors have either family or other engagements, and so we're really trying to be courteous of everybody who is in here, so I really don't appreciate that. Thank you, and if you don't respect the time, we will adjourn this meeting. So Olivia Gonzalez.
Hi, I'm actually Catherine Gonzalez. I'm here to speak on behalf of Olivia Gonzalez. She's here this evening, but is, has been working tirelessly organizing the youth climate strike and is just exhausted from speaking out and speaking out and speaking out, which I think is poetically illustrative of why it's so important that as adults, we take action. It's unfair to our youth to put it all on them to save their world, and that is the dire situation they find themselves in. I was speaking to my father about all of her activism and he said, man, but she's just turned fifteen. And I told him flat out, like, yeah, she does not have the luxury of waiting to be an adult to take action. It is an emergency and I just urge your support of the bill this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Simon Walker. Followed by Carol, sorry, followed by Carol Chamberlain, followed by Carol Benson.
Hi, good evening. It's a great pleasure that I get to be here tonight as an immigrant and an educator at U N M and speak in front of all of you. In order to be here this evening, I have had to depend on infinite ancestors who have enabled me to exist and enabled all of you guys to exist to be here and hand it over a world where we can live and breathe and celebrate and be happy together in life. And the idea that I won't be able to pass that on to the future disturbs me more than anything else. Many countries across the world have already declared a climate emergency and here we are in America, one of the countries that puts the most CO2 out per person, and I am so honored and grateful that the city of Albuquerque is considering also declaring that. In response to the Councilwoman who very carefully suggested that we need to be realistic, I would say I absolutely agree and we have to act in concert with realism, but we need a certain radical shift to break us away from our addiction. So I implore the Council to vote for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carol Chamberlain, followed by Carol Benson.
Good evening, Counselors. My name is Carol Chamberlain. I'm with the Sierra Club and I'm here to support R-19187. I have to say that our entire society is addicted to fossil fuels and we are about to overdose. We need an intervention. Anyone who's familiar with recovery programs knows that the first step to conquering an addiction is recognizing and admitting that you have one. Please vote in support of this proposal. Think globally, act locally.
Thank you. You were Carol Benson, right? Oh, this is Carol Benson. Okay, thank you. Followed by Peter, followed by Erin Pang.
Thank you, Counselors. I'm just an artist, but even our candidates on the television are not putting the case as it actually is. It's been made clear to me, even though I'm not very scientific, that our emergency is not just one among many issues, it's the issue under which everything else falls and everything else is linked. I'll just mention a very few. Societal unrest and crime. Citizens United. Citizen United. Extinction of species, energy, displacement of peoples and creatures, budgets, voting rights, Arctic drilling, immigration, military buildup and expenditures, suicide, new diseases and likely world epidemics. You could go on all night, but it's all relevant and linked to this one issue of climate emergency. I hope you'll vote wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Yiest, followed by Erin Pang, followed by Gwen Houston.
Hello, Madam President. Hello, Madam President. Good evening. My name is Peter Yiest. I am a student at the University of New Mexico. And before I speak, I would just like to swiftly address the young woman who felt the need to talk about this. need to talk about this emergency while you tried to strike her down. I understand that time is of the essence, but we really shouldn't have to implore you to speak about the fate of our planet. I mean, we're fighting for each other. We're not trying to take away each other's time, and we're also fighting for you guys. So I would ask that you respect that. I'd like to address public transport. That was in the climate plan. Public transportation is incredibly essential, and I'm so glad to see it as part of the plan. You may know this, you may not, but the single most important factor in escaping poverty is access to public transportation. And we must revitalize our public transportation in order to have a just society. While we talk about climate change, it is also essential that we talk about, while we talk about climate change, we must also, in lockstep, address the impoverished peoples of this city, of this nation, and of this planet.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Erin Pang.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the council. My name is Erin Pang. I came to Albuquerque a little over a year ago and didn't plan to stay longer than a year, but here I am. I've stayed in part because of New Mexico's beautiful outdoors, all of which will be threatened by climate change. But I've also stayed here because of the people I've met, many of who are in the room today. I'm inspired by their dedication to fight for theirs and others' right to clean air and clean water and a clean environment. And I've been thinking a lot lately about how we create lasting policy change, thinking a lot about the young people striking for climate right now, and I'm inspired by the courage in recognizing that being passive isn't an option anymore. So passing this climate resolution would be a signal that Albuquerque is listening and that together we can lead in the right direction. And in particular, I'd like to express strong support for keeping the concerns of vulnerable communities central to a just transition, as stated in the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Gwen Houston, followed by Erica Lee, followed by Grady.
Hello, council. As the climate changes, New Mexico in the dry season already faces quite a lot of wildfires. And as extreme weather becomes more, more common, we're going to see a greater number of those in our area specifically where we are in the globe, which is going to put many New Mexicans at risk and can greatly damage a lot of our natural places beyond repair. But I think something that might be a little bit more immediate, and a little bit more immediately apparent to the council, is that tonight there have been an overwhelming amount of supportive voices for this resolution. And as city council members, I would hope that you would act in the interest of the people that you're here to serve. So I'd like you to consider that when you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica, followed by Grady, followed by Sandra Gariot.
Well, to start this, my name is Reverend Erica Lee Simka, and I'm the pastor of Albuquerque Mennonite Church. We're kind of like loud Quakers with better potlucks. Mennonites believe, along with every other major world faith, that the most important part of life is to treat our neighbors how we want to be treated. People are our neighbors. Animals, water, air, trees are our neighbors too, and they need to be taken care of. The word of the day is opportunity, and we are past due to be the national and global leaders in caring for our neighbors, all our neighbors. What would Jesus do? What would Sophia do? What would Moses do? What would Moses do? Peace be upon him. What would Mr. Rogers do? I think they would all say this is an opportunity to love our neighbors by protecting the environment with swift action like yesterday. Let's take care of this fragile earth, our island home, together, as the Book of Common Prayer calls the earth. May it be. Amen. And thank you.
So Grady Macklin, followed by Sandra Gariot, followed by Bianca Encinas.
Good evening, city councilors. My name is Grady Macklin. I have a petition on my phone with 142 signatures of other people who can't be here. Everyone hopes you'll pass this emergency resolution to convey to everyone the proper sense of urgency and what's going on. Perhaps there are some questions about the specifics. Where is this funding coming from? What exactly do we do? But the real question is, why are we just talking about this now? Why isn't this stuff already done? That's on all of you, and it's on all of us, except for these cute kids. This is just the first step. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sandra, followed by Bianca Encinas, followed by Martha Engberg.
Hi, I'm Sandra Gariot-Stasek. I want to thank the council for bringing this forward. I'd like to, I guess, emphasize a strategy that seems to be working, and maybe the only thing that we can start with is local cities and states going ahead and taking the initiative because we're not getting that from the executive branch and the federal government. In reality, there have been pullbacks on regulations and protections at that level. So I think the fight is going to be coming from the individuals, from communities who know exactly how climate is affecting our, our area and what we can do. And I also appreciate both the city and county commissions' efforts to this date on this. So please, please consider passing this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, we still have a couple of speakers. Unfortunately, we lost one of our councilors because, as I mentioned, you know, when we were taking the extra time, it really took away from the public speaking. And I know just Councilor Winter has a comment before we're done with public speaking because he has another engagement. Councilor Winter.
Thank you, Madam President. And I've, it's very interesting, but I just want to say that I think that the administration, as well as this council, has done about 90% already of what the plan says. I think the plan's from 2008 and '09 and probably needs to be updated too, but I think that I'm very proud of what the council's done and what the administration has done to this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Winter. So our next speaker is Bianca Encinas. It looks like she may have left. Followed by Martha Engberg.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you for considering this resolution. My name is Martha Engberg, and I'm a coordinator and climate justice organizer with the Albuquerque Center for Peace and Justice. I want to echo what has been said already. We need a transition to a post-carbon economy. The federal government has failed us, but local elected leaders such as yourselves have the ability to play the role we need and to put us on the right path. Because of decades of delayed action, we don't have time to do anything but declare this a crisis and disrupt business as usual. We need to mobilize, and it starts at the local level with you. Mobilization has benefits other than just saving our earth. It can increase equality, employment, and attention to the cultivation and full participation of every citizen. There are unknowns, and we acknowledge that, but we would all rather walk boldly into the unknown with you rather than go about business as usual. We have an opportunity to be an example for New Mexico, the US, and the world. So please vote yes, and thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker. Do any of the councilors have any questions, comments? Councilor Borrego.
This question is for the sponsors, I think. Maybe you can clarify. So there was a reference earlier about the amount that it would take to fund this, and I just wondered if anybody had any comments regarding that. Specifically, I guess I should ask a little more detailed, is there's a task force that's being developed. Would that task force then recommend to the council, you know, what funding would be appropriate or how would that be done? Because there's no reference in the resolution.
Madam President, I'll ask Ms. Yara to address this, and then perhaps other councilors, sponsors.
Yes, President, Council, Madam President, Councilor Borrego. So my understanding is that the task force was actually convened back in 2008 and came up with a plan that was submitted to this council for, as a receipt be noted, in 2009. The city has been using this document and its plans since then for different departments, of course. Different, three different administrations so far have gone through this document. This legislation does not call for a new task force, but if that would be the will of the council to maybe have that task force update the policy or see...
And that's why I was asking the question of the sponsors, actually. Is that something that you thought about, or?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilor. I don't think so. I think as the Ms. Yara mentioned, the Climate Action Plan is something before we were, I was here, I think Councilor Benton actually did the plan way back in the day. And so the plan is actually on the shelf. It's been used as a reference, and so as I understood it, this would simply pull that back off the shelf, have the existing staff just sort of go through it, figure out what we've already accomplished, which we believe is a good portion, and then come back and make recommendations to the council and the administration on how to close that gap. And we also know that through the Bloomberg grant and others, the administration's already working on initiatives that probably could be incorporated into the plan, like our electric vehicle process program and others that weren't on the table 11 years ago. And so I think we can do it with existing, with existing staff who already have those jobs.
Okay, Councilor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I am very proud of the work that's been done by the Albuquerque City Council and the administration, and it goes back all the way to 2008. When we started the Climate Action Plan, we've done a tremendous amount of work over the years. Today, when you go out and vote on your capital bonds, 3% of that money goes for energy conservation. And I think that Brandon Baca made a great statement. Inaction will cost us a lot more later on. So I think that we've got to look at this very seriously, and I want to thank the sponsors for their work on this. Because I think we've got, I mean, the plan was put together in 2008. This plan does need some revisions. It does need some updates, and I believe by us working very closely with this community, and I was just so pleased to see today that we just didn't have a single generation of groups of people speaking. We had multi-generations of people speaking on this issue, from young to our senior citizens to our middle-aged individuals. That's how important this issue is. And I'm very disappointed that President Trump walked away from the Paris Accord. I think that was a huge mistake, and unfortunately, you know, I'm glad to see that cities are now dealing with this issue. Because if we do it one city at a time, one state at a time, this is a global issue, and we must be working together with other nations in assuring that we can keep our climate safe for future generations. So I definitely support this resolution as written.
Councilor Benton.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, just quickly, we got into the, to the cost question. Of course, the cost is, is likely to be large over time. This bill itself doesn't create any cost. This bill says that it's setting some goals, and we will have to absorb costs as we, we are already absorbing costs as we live today with, over the last, just in this century, we've experienced in Albuquerque 16 of the hottest 25 years in record-keeping of the climate in Albuquerque. 16, just since 2000, of the hottest 25 years have been recorded in this century. Our climate is changing. You know, I moved here as a young man. It was a different climate. It was cooler at night. Your house would cool off at night in the middle of the summer naturally, if you dealt with it properly. But that, those days are slipping away, and this bill contains language about resilience of our city. It's about us being a sustainable place going forward, long beyond the time that we're all up here are gone. And, you know, we know, we love this place. This is a wonderful city that we live in, but it's an existential threat. Our, the threat to Albuquerque is different from some other cities because of the heat. When you think about the cost to cool a house and for people to remain healthy and comfortable in their home, those of us with some means can pay more for that, perhaps, or we can retrofit our houses at our own expense. But if we don't, as a community, decide that people who are especially vulnerable, elderly people with low incomes, just working people with low incomes, who may be in substandard housing, the, the issues that are called out for in this plan is 10 years. It, you know, yes, we have referred to this over the years as a city, but for the most part, it has sat on a shelf, and that's a decade that we've lost already. But, but when this plan was created, dozens and dozens of citizens came together as part of the task force that created it, and it's legitimate today, but absolutely after a decade, you've got to update something like this. But just, just quickly, so you know the working groups who worked on this, and I was part of it for sure. Business industry and carbon offset strategies, carbon-neutral buildings, complete livable neighborhoods, clean renewable energy, local food and agriculture, recycling and zero waste, social change, and transportation. These are all still very relevant today and just as, more so than they were 10 years ago. I think we were very forward-looking 10 years ago. I want to give a tip of the hat to Mayor Chavez because Senator Mayor Chavez and Mr. Bacalzo there worked on this together for it. I want to thank him and the former mayor because they brought this forward and believed in it, and the council at that time did adopt the document, but I think there was a shift after that, you know, after 2009. But it is about adopting goals. It's about recognizing this existential threat. It's not spending any money right now. It's talking about a commitment that we're making as a city to do what's right for future generations. And just as an example, again, this process, there were 10 large, well-attended town hall meetings about, about the crisis at that time. And I'm a believer that some of the folks here, who may not have been here back then, will pick up the torch and will hold the city accountable and be, be part of this, the whole process of suggesting what we can do to update this document. But we're fortunate to have this framework, and that's all this is, is the framework of a document. But it's also very important that we make this declaration about the climate emergency, and that's, that's what, what the folks here have come to ask us to do. I do want to apologize for everybody for having your time cut down to a minute. It was beyond our control. Our president, who doesn't believe in any of this stuff, also decided that he'd come and shut down our center city and our, our local government for no reason, for a political event, and that's what we're dealing with here tonight. And for that reason, we've lost a couple of our, our councilors to, to be able to participate in the vote, and we've, we've been forced to shorten your time to speak. So my apologies for that, but that's the reason it happened. Yeah, I appreciate everyone's comments, you know, broad, broad level of very good thought from, from every age group, as Councilor Sanchez says. So, councilors, I'm trying, not trying to make this a closing, and the other sponsor should speak as well, but, but I think this is an important action for us to take. We appreciate the administration working with on us, and, and we adjusted some language at their request today, but, but we're all in this together. The mayor came in, Mayor Keller came in, and joined on to the climate accord and the mayor's climate accord. We really appreciate their, their support in general for, for these important initiatives.
Thank you, Councilor Benton. Actually, we... Actually, I didn't send it to close, so we still have some councillors who want to speak. And Mr. Rayel, I think, wants to say a few words.
Madam President and members of the council, I just want to express our strong support of this as well. As you mentioned, councillor Benton, Mayor Keller has been very supportive and has moved forward in, to sign the accords and to really establish a sustainability office and officer within the environmental planning, Environment Health Department. We've been working on many of these issues and continue to do progress on many of these fronts. I, we welcome the opportunity to have this resolution because it really does begin to inform not only what happens to us locally, but in a regional level, state level, and obviously at, at the national level. And there are very important issues. So just wanted to ensure the council that the administration is very supportive of moving forward with these, with these efforts, and will continue to monitor and look at the 2009 plan and, and begin to make some changes and update that plan as we move forward.
Councillor Borrego.
Councillor Gibson. Okay. Well, I, I'm supportive of this resolution, but I also, in, in that vein, I am also concerned about the current operating budget. The language in my little write-up says that the, any, any costs would be absorbed in the current operating budget appropriations. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to ask the sponsors if they would consider an amendment. And Stephanie has drafted something to that end, and just to be sure that we're fiscally responsible here, so that we're not, you know, creating something that is not able to be absorbed into our future budget. So can I read that into the record?
Absolutely.
And if the sponsors are okay with that?
Yes, Madam President, councillor Borrego. So my, the proposed amendment would read on page four after line five, insert a new section, section eight. And it would read, "It is the intent of the city council to determine estimated costs of implementing the provisions of this resolution and to provide adequate appropriations for this purpose, subject to availability."
Sponsors, are you, do you want to re-read that again? Please, just one more time.
Sure. It would read, "It is the intent of the city council to determine the estimated costs of implementing the provisions of this resolution and to provide adequate appropriations for this purpose, subject to availability."
I would take out "subject to availability." I would just say "provide appropriations for this purpose," period. And I would make that a motion.
There's a motion? I'll second it. There's a motion in the second for the amendment that was just, amendment two, amendment number two, that was just read in, into the record. Councillor Benton.
Madam President.
Yeah, I said councillor Benton.
I'll just ask the, the sponsor. It, it sounds to me as though this would be a significant effort on the part of the council. That's my only concern. If we're talking about the capacity of the city to estimate long-term global, globalized sort of citywide costs, then for the council, with our fairly modest staff to take that on, I would be concerned with that.
I think, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Ms. Yara.
Yes, Madam President, councillor Borrego, I, I was actually more drafted this with the intent of funding the efforts that would be providing community outreach and education for the climate change issues.
That's what it says in the resolution.
I can add that to the text.
Yeah. Would that be acceptable? Because the resolution talks about...
Councillor Benton, councillor Gibson first, and then councillor Benton.
Thank you, Madam President. So I kind of see that assessment of, of costs, or estimation of costs, as sort of being outside of what we're asking, what, what we're asking the, the group who's working on this to do, whether that's inside staff or people who've worked on this before. Hold on one moment, please. I still have the floor. Now, if it's, it's something like, you know, launching like a, putting together like an education program, that, that may not, that might be a little more doable than, I was thinking more technical. If there's a, I don't know, a, a program that requires a technical expertise, that might, you know, very, very possibly would be a little more difficult and might require somebody who's, who has expertise or knowledge, talent in that area. So I...
This sits right here. What you guys are doing. So it's specific to that.
I don't know about that. I don't know about this amendment. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Benton, and then councillor Borrego.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say that, that, yes, we're committing to educating our residents. We do that all the time, every day as a city. I don't know that, you know, without defining some sort of education program. We, we also know that, that our schools educate people as well, and our other local governments. But this is an aspirational desire to put these issues in the forefront. To say that the council is going to be the, the entity that educates everyone as opposed to the city as a whole, I think, you know, is problematic.
Councillor Borrego.
Okay, so I'm reading from our handout, from our internal handout. And it says fiscal impact. If approved, the resolution would require administrative costs for climate education and outreach activities. However, those costs are not, not known at this time. But we're talking about climate education and outreach activities. And then it says, once an estimate, as, once an estimated, well, this is, doesn't read properly, but, "Once these costs are determined, the city council would need to ensure they can be observed within the current operating budget appropriations, and if not, identify additional funding for appropriation." So what I'm saying is, there's nothing in the resolution that addresses that. And I'm trying to connect the dots here. So maybe it wouldn't be the council that does the outreach. Maybe it would be, in fact, the task force, or, you know, working with the mayor's office in conjunction with the council. So I'm trying to connect the dots here and have some semblance of the fact that, yes, we have adopted this resolution, but there is a little bit, there's a little bit of teeth in it. So it's not just we've adopted it. And maybe, you know...
Ms. Rayel.
Madam President and councillor Borrego, may I make a suggestion just from a perspective of time?
I found it.
That if you would like to direct the council, the administration to work with council staff to determine an educational program, our sustainability office will be more than willing to sit with council staff, and we can come back with a resolution to the council describing an educational program. We're about ready to introduce a very comprehensive website as it relates to sustainability and some of the issues we're working on. So we're all on the same page, but this way, we can at least have our staffs work on, on appropriate program and costs, and get input from the community so that we can make it work.
And would that be appropriate to add that language, what you just said, into this resolution, so that there is, there, you know, there is a mechanism for that to happen?
Madam President and councillor Borrego, if you feel like it needs, needs to be in the language of the bill, that's obviously your, your decision. But I will commit that we will do that administratively so that we can ensure you get all the information you need.
Yeah. And we have a motion on the floor currently, so councillor Benton.
Yeah, you know, in principle, I'm not opposed to, to the idea that we've got to do this and that by definition, we have to do it. What I'm concerned about now, since we're talking about taking and updating a document and, and tying it in with what the administration's already doing, which we, you know, there's got to be some discussion back and forth on that. We expect that there'll be community input on what the updates look like. So, so some of this is, is unknown right now until such time as we, we start to chew on this and, and try to get it up to, to speed. So I, I think, that's my only concern really, is that to define what that looks like.
I will withdraw the motion that I made then. And, and just ask that we take, direct our, our staff to look at how to bridge that gap.
Yeah.
Because I think it's really important that we don't pass something that doesn't have some kind of, you know, hinge to it.
Okay. Before I send it to the sponsors to close, I just want to say that, you know, I, I support this as well. I think, you know, just doing the research on it, learning that, you know, the city of Albuquerque is doing a lot of what's already in here. I don't necessarily believe that it's been on the shelf for all these years. I know that I've had several of these conversations in terms of what we do. But I just want to say that there was a young man who spoke, I think his name was Peter Yist. And, you know, one of the things that's, that's not in here, and, and I agree with him on, is that, you know, representing a community that, that's an underserved community, and some of the, the climate injustices that happen in our communities, I would like to make an amendment to actually say that endorsing the declaration of the, of, of a climate emergency. So I don't know where exactly in the language it would be, Ms. Yara or, or Mr. Rayel, but just to say, "and climate injustice."
I would second that.
No, that's okay.
Madam President. Per the city attorney's recommendation, on page three, line 15, after the term effort, we would insert "climate and climate in..."
Madam President, my apologies. I am an attorney. I have the same handwriting problems that doctors have, but it should say "and climate justice." And AND comma, AND climate justice.
Okay. Can we read that one more time, Ms. Yara? That way we can...
So, Madam President, the sentence, the full sentence would read on page three, line 14, section two. "The city commits its, to its own citywide just transition and climate emergency mobilization effort and climate justice, utilizing the 2009 CAP as a basis and framework to reformulate and fully update the plan."
Awesome. So I make a motion, and councillor Borrego second that, and then councillor Benton.
Yeah, just, just to be clear, so I, I'm, I'm not opposed at all, but, but in the "whereas" it does talk about addressing climate change as a matter of social and economic justice, requiring frontline communities that have historically borne the brunt of extracted fossil fuel economy, participate actively in the mobilization, and that they benefit from the transition. So that is one of the "whereas"s, and then, so this would be, I think, consistent with that. And there was other language within the actual sections, but I don't know.
Yeah, the motion just kind of spells it out loud and clear, so...
So I think that's, that's great.
Okay. So there's a motion in the second for amendment number two, because, oh, was it, is it two? It'd be three. For amendment number three. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. So we are now ready to close. Councillor Benton, Davis, Gibson, whoever wants to tackle it.
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. So we are now on item 12, other business. OC 39, the city clerk's correction of error and omission to the enactment of O 2019 019 regarding floor amendment one to O 1967. If you guys can please exit quietly, because we actually have some more business before we adjourn. Regarding floor amendment one to O 1967, so into Article six, section seven of the city charter, ROA, section one, one, 10. I move, I move approval.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. I think our city clerk, you want to add anything, or? Nope. Okay, so we are, to close, urge your support. OC 39, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. There being no further business, the city council meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to make sure that we get the...